And welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for December 4th, 2018. On this evening, we have Mayor Peter O'Taki joining us by phone. On my left is Councilmember Kirsten Keith. To my right is Councilmember Catherine Carlton. And then for those who are with us for the first time, down to our left is City Attorney, Bill McClure, our City Manager, Astrid Jerome Robinson. And then if you want to speak this evening, to our right here is our City Clerk Judy Heron. And there's paperwork in the back that you can go ahead and fill out if there's any specific item you want to speak on and provide it to Judy. The sooner the better, so we know we can get that into the system, that would be great. If everyone could go ahead and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
So, this evening, we have to start with two proclamations, both bittersweet. The first proclamation we have this evening is for Mr. Ron LaFrance. Ron, if you could please join me up here. So unfortunately, Mr. LaFrance is leaving us. He's been with our Menlo Park Community Development and Building Division and been with the city for 21 years?
Yeah, 21.
21 years. And so, we are all, obviously, very sad he's leaving us, but we're excited for him. It's a tremendous opportunity. Fran Dean from the Chamber of Commerce actually commented to me tonight, "If I don't read this declaration, does that mean you can't leave?" And we were plotting of whether or not we would actually read this. If we could put it off, could we hold you longer? But unfortunately... So, we want to present you with this proclamation. Whereas on February 18th, 1997, Ron LaFrance joined the City of Menlo Park Community Development, Department and Building Division. And whereas Ron began his career as a Senior Building Inspector and was promoted to the building official in 2003, where he oversaw the construction of hundreds of residential, commercial, and mixed-use developments in every corner of the city, from small additions to single-family homes, to major new office and commercial buildings along the El Camino Corridor and the Bayfront area. And where Ron was promoted to the Assistant Community Development Director position in 2014, and served as a valuable mentor and coach in the professional growth of not only his 12 dedicated and talented Building Division staff members, but also many colleagues throughout the city. And where Ron was awarded the 2013 Employee Excellence Award for Innovation, which recognized his technical expertise, problem-solving skills, professional judgment, and perseverance to work collaboratively with stakeholders in finding building-construction solutions without compromising the safety or integrity of a large new office building. And whereas in Ron's esteemed career with the city, he was a respected leader where no job was too small or too big. He could effortlessly help fill in for his team from answering phone calls at the front counter, to plan-checking a building permit, to inspecting foundations and framing in the field. He exemplified the definition of a team player and was supportive of his team and generous with his time to helping others succeed. And whereas Ron was integral to the success of Connect Menlo's Green Team in creating sustainable building regulations for the Bayfront area, helped develop and maintain the city's land management system, and initiated a study to improve workflows and develop a new fee structure. And whereas Ron is well-respected and trusted in his profession and by his colleagues, and he will be most known and missed for his genuineness, depth of knowledge, quick wit, and willingness to share his enthusiasm for air streams in the outdoors, as well as his passion for music and frequent guitar-playing sessions before Planning Commission and City Council meetings. And also for all the time he spends in the weight room, making all of us feel inadequate. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Ray Mueller, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council and the city congratulate and express our sincere gratitude to Ron LaFrance for his loyalty and service over the past 21 years. It was long. Would you like to say a few words? All right. And it was long, but it's one of those things where you read a long proclamation, but words, all the words pile on, but they just can't capture how much is going to be missed. So the next proclamation we have this evening is recognizing former Mayor Dee Tollis, who passed from us this year. I'm just going to go ahead and read this into the record. This is going to be mailed to his family. Whereas Raymond Dee Tollis was elected to the Menlo Park City Council in 1992, serving until 1996, and was selected to serve as mayor in 1995. And whereas during his civic tenure and throughout his life, Dee was known for his gracious and cordial style, endeavored to work with his colleagues for the achievement and the greater good of the entire community. And whereas Dee was known to be smart, approachable, compassionate, and caring. And whereas Dee worked as Senior Vice President and Regional Director of Union Bank of California, and served as a leader in a number of nonprofit organizations, including the Peninsula Center for the Blind, Avenidas, the Menlo Circus Club, the Bohemian Club, Peninsula Bible Church, Menlo Church, and as honorary chairman of the 40th Annual Palo Alto Concours d'Élegance. And whereas Dee served on the boards of Notre Dame de Mer University, the National Center for Equine Facilitated Therapy, the Children's Heal Council of Palo Alto, the Sequoia Hospital Foundation, and the San Mateo Historical Museum. And whereas Dee was a volunteer deputy sheriff, a captain of the Mounted Patrol of San Mateo County, a member of the Mounted Search and Rescue Team. And whereas Dee was known for his exceptional piloting skills, as he once flew former Mayor Steve Schmidt over the Sierras in a snowstorm to attend a conference in Lake Tahoe. And whereas Dee was an avid fan of abalone diving in Mendocino, playing dominoes, long talks, and visiting the Big Hole River in Montana. And whereas Dee is survived by his wife of 55 years, Laura Lou, son Parr, and his wife Jill, daughter Tori, and her husband Tom, and grandchildren Riley, Mia, Danica, and Peyton. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Peter O'Taki, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council and the city do hereby wish to honor the service of Dee Tollis to the citizens of the City of Menlo Park. We express our gratitude to Dee Tollis and his family for his service in our community. If you could just hold a moment of silence. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and proceed to public comment at this time. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. If you could please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment cards this evening?
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Gail Wilkerson. I've been a resident of Menlo Park in and around since 1955, when US 101 was two lanes. So I've been around a long time. Okay. I grew up in Menlo Park, and I graduated from Menlo Atherton High School in 1967, down the street. My family, they've been very active in the city. You may know of one, Honetta Harris. And the center was named after her. I've watched as the community was allowed, small businesses and associated on the east side were removed by the expansion of Willa Road. There used to be a strip there. My son's godmother had two barber shops up there. And it was kind of like fun stopping up there and getting candy from the candy store. But they all were taken away. I come at this time tonight to try to understand why it's so hard for my leasing space zone C4. I've had so much trouble renting 550 square feet for a commercial purpose in the city of my childhood. I supplied the planning department a description of my business and what it entailed. I had to do this because the property management stated to me that two other businesses had been ousted because of the nature of their business. And the planning department said they weren't allowed to be there. I was then told by the planning department that the building that the owners have owned for 35 years was not in parking compliance, even though the building's been there like 50 years, and these people have owned it 35. This was shocking. The owner converted the two corner vacant dirt spaces, there's two lots there, two parcels, to parking lots. And the planning department knew this, and it was approved, and it's there now. It wasn't denied. And it was sole intentions for the tenants in the buildings there. There's a total of eight tenants. And there's 36 parking spaces, and they said that it wasn't the building. They wouldn't give me a license. They told me I would have to pay a $1,500 feasibility study, and it's not defundable. I was told to submit plans, square footage, and other dimensions. I was told that they would do a study. I was told that they had to take surveying. Nonetheless, I've been at this for three years. And I'd like to get some resolution as to why I can't rent a little space.
Thank you for coming this evening and sharing your story with us, Ms. Wilkerson. So we're going to go ahead and move now to commission reports. And Ms. Wilkerson, if you can go ahead and provide your information to the Assistant City Manager, we can go ahead and make... Ms. Robinson, we can go ahead and make sure someone follows up with you. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to commission reports. Excuse me, are there any more public comment cards? No? So, if we can go ahead... Did you have a public comment? Go ahead. We'll have you fill out the card afterwards. Go ahead and provide us your name. You can fill it out afterwards. Just tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Luke Hannah, and I live, like, the city I live in, Menlo Park.
Great.
I'm a middle school student at the School of Launtrada, and I've missed three and a half days of school due to poor water maintenance. Several teachers have had to move classrooms, and of them, many had belongings that were destroyed. Thanks to the care and effort of our leadership teacher, we have been receiving some donations, but as I'm sure you know, no donation could ever ensure the safety of our students in another event. I just came here to ask, like, what are you doing to prevent this from happening again?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking to us tonight. Are there any other... Would any other gentleman who'd come with you, did you want to speak to us as well? No, great. So we can't answer your question this evening, but we are in dialogue with your school and with teachers at your school, but we really appreciate you coming and speaking to us. So this evening, next on the agenda, we have commission reports. At this time, I would like to go ahead and bring forward Complete Streets Commissioner Bill Kirsch to discuss the Complete Streets Committee Report on the Middle Avenue Conceptual
I'm Bill Kirsch. I'm the Chair of the Complete Streets Commission, and just want to thank the City Council members for your very hard work and loyalty and support to the city. And I want to especially thank the outgoing City Council people, Kirsten Keith, and Peter O'Taki, and Rich Klein, for their amazing number of years of hard work. I think this is the toughest job in the city, toughest job anybody could have, really. And you all have really helped move the city forward, and I appreciate it. And a lot of people appreciate the very hard work you do. So thank you. So I'm going to give you... I want to first thank you for approving the permanent installation of the Oak Grove University Bike Boulevard. That was a huge effort. It took guts on your part, everybody's part, to implement that. It's been a huge gain for the city, for the quality of life. It helps motorists, makes it safer to drive because they know where the bikes are going to be. It's made cycling safer for kids and adults. And I think it's made the sidewalk safer as well, because everybody is looking out for each other now. So thank you for doing that. I want to just bring up a few interesting points from an Almanac article on November 14 about the Oak Grove Boulevard. There were 756 respondents to the consultant survey. Eighty percent of those respondents were in favor of permanent installation for the bike lane. The Bike Boulevard has reduced collisions in three of the four intersections, especially El Camino Real, and also increased cycling and the number of bicyclists going through three of the four major intersections. So it's been a big gain for the city, and I and the Complete Streets Commission would like to build on the Bike Boulevard and expand it out and really make the city a great place to live, which it already is, but it can get... It'll just keep getting better. I want to read a few quotes, if you don't mind. This came out of the Almanac. As a mother whose son was dorked and fractured his collarbone last fall while riding his bike to school, I implore you to keep and add more biking safety measures for our children. Another comment. It's good for my kids. They get exercise and independence. It's good for me. It's good for the environment. And here's another comment. We need to encourage more active commutes for people of all ages, and clearly marking dedicated bike routes is a small but critical step. Couple more, last two. This is from the Superintendent of Menlo Park City Schools. On behalf of the school district with enthusiasm, I ask you to vote to approve the Oak Grove Bike Route as one of hopefully many future permanent solutions to address safe traffic and safety. And finally, from the Hillview Principal, Hillview School Principal, so many Hillview students bicycle to school on a regular basis, and the more we can encourage them to take well-marked, protected routes, the better for their safety and well-being. Thank you. So finally, as the Oak Grove Boulevard has been such a big gain for the city, there's another project that we would like to see the city tackle right away, and that's Middle Avenue. And it's Middle Avenue, think Safeway and Nilon Park, from university down to El Camino. And then also, we need to start tackling the very critical pedestrian-bicycle crossing of the railroad tracks. Stanford has approved funds. I believe a consultant has been hired. I think a city staff person has been assigned, but I'm not sure about that. But I think the time is now that we need to move forward on this project. As you know, 500 El Camino is under construction. I can imagine it's going to be more expensive to undertake the crossing project once the El Camino project is complete. But I and our committee would like to see it move forward right away. So I have... I want to put forward just some ideas. These are just things that... Ideas thrown out from one of the subcommittees on our Complete Streets. And it's just some things to think about to start a conversation, but I know this has to be a fully-blown community outreach and so on. But we'd like to see, ideally, something happen in 2019, and improvements can be trialed, just as they were on Oak Grove, and approved upon, and let the community see the improvements in action. So, that green line is Middle Avenue. As you go up, you're crossing El Camino, you're crossing into the 500 El Camino, and then you're crossing the railroad tracks into Burgess Park. As you know, this is Middle, looking towards El Camino Real. It's a very dangerous, very ugly street, maybe second only to El Camino Real. Not fun to walk on. There's the crossing at Blake. You got to cross through the gutter. It's dangerous. Middle Avenue has no bike lanes. It's too wide. Cars go too fast. It's just no place for humans to be. Yet, we have a big park there, one of the biggest and most active parks in the city. And then we have a big shopping center down the street. That green represents the path it would go through, 500 El Camino, the new project under construction. Stanford has set aside that path, and then you see where it would enter and go under the train tracks there. So this is the Safeway parking lot, and then the Safeway structure would be up top. El Camino is on the right. We need to have a really very visible, safe crossing there for both pedestrians and bicyclists. We need a way to move cyclists and pedestrians safely down the Menlo Avenue corridor. Let me move forward here. This is looking into the Safeway parking lot. That's where Pete's Coffee and Rubio's is. Right now, it's a very funky kind of handicap ramp. Cyclists, if they want to ride into that shopping center, have to tangle with a very dangerous driveway entrance into that, into the big parking lot. So, one idea is to provide a safe way to get into, a safe bicycling and pedestrian path into that project, into that shopping center. And one idea would be maybe a two-lane bikeway on part of it. This is on Middlefield Avenue, and in this particular picture, you've got cyclists moving both in the same direction, but you could have a bidirectional path with bollards separating. That's one idea you can have on this part of Middle Avenue. Now, the kind of in the orange, that's Nilon Park. What we'd like to see the city consider is a path, a green path there, marked in green, that would go around the perimeter of Nilon Park and would connect Middle to Roble on the other side of the park. So this would create safe cycling into Nilon Park and through Nilon Park and connect with downtown and the northern part of the city. That's... This is standing in Nilon Park, looking across Middle. That's Blake. You can see the crosswalk there. It's in between a utility pole and a sign. You have to walk into the gutter right now to access it. Cars go too fast. It's very dangerous. I have a 90-year-old mom. We live a block away. I wouldn't walk her across that. We can make it a lot nicer. We could have a nice entryway into Nilon. We could have a nice bicycle path going by. We could have a much safer crossing, potentially with Refuge Island, so that you only have to cross one lane of traffic at a time. On the other side, on Roble, when you exit that long alleyway, which is there, there's no crossing for cars to know that pedestrians or cyclists would be coming out of this alleyway. And there's no signage that tells you from Roble that this alleyway takes you to Nilon Park. So it could be made a lot nicer. We could have lighting, nice path, and signage. And then this middle, if we can get Middle Avenue to be a safe, kind of complete street, attractive corridor, we can move a lot of people through that corridor on bicycles by foot. We can get them into Burgess Park so that they don't have to get in their car and go all the way around Ravenswood. And it'll add to our existing network of the Oak Grove University Network. And that's just a broader picture of the whole network. And that's it. So, these are ideas. We have a full plan. We know we need a lot of city input, community input, but we'd like to see something start right away.
Thanks, Bill. Bill, I just wanted to say thanks so much for bringing that forward to you and to the other Complete Street Commissioners and whoever's on the subcommittee with you. I think these are great ideas, and I know we talked about it even when I was liaison to the Bike Commission. This was something that came up to talk about in Middle Avenue.
Yeah, it came up a while ago, right?
Yeah, it sure did. And so it's great to see it highlighted again. And then one of the things to think about, too, and I know we talked about this a couple of years ago, is to have back... The parking change, so that you're not parking forward, but parking backward into there on Middle, at Nilon.
Yes. Another consideration would be to just remove all of that perpendicular parking, because there's a big lot, as you know, in that area. I know that would be controversial, but if the lot had signage to direct people into park there, perhaps that parking could be removed and make it safer. Just a thought.
The area locally that I would point to for the backend parking is off... Over by the Dish Parking now.
Okay, right. Yeah, exactly. Yes.
Yeah, so it's something to look at, so people can actually see how it functions and operates. And that bike path that leads to Roble Avenue is... It's just a path. It's a pedestrian, you know, path. And it is pretty underutilized at this point, because I think a lot of people don't know that it exists, actually.
Yeah, the city just put a nice curb cut, so cyclists can go up the ramp and go right in there, but there's no signage. And cars go fast down Roble, and there's no crosswalk to alert drivers.
Okay, well, good. Well, thanks for bringing this forward, and we'll look forward to it.
And we have a couple of public comment cards on this item.
Hi, Jennifer Johnson. I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm coming here as a private citizen. We actually received this report at our last commission meeting and had a pretty lengthy discussion about it. And I think Nilon Park is one of my son's favorite parks, and it is really unsafe, you know, parking in that perpendicular parking and, you know, trying to get in and out, and you can't see the traffic coming. And when they first said, "Oh, we would just take that out," I was like, "Wait a minute." But I think that the parking lot behind is sufficient, and I love the idea of getting that area to be more bike and pedestrian-friendly. And I think it's not utilized that way right now, because it's just not safe. People do go too fast down Middle, but it would be great to provide alternatives for bikes and for pedestrians, especially to get across El Camino when that all comes through. So just wanted to put my support in for that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Councilmembers. Jennifer Baskin. I am also on the Parks and Recreation Commission, also here as a private citizen. I live on College Avenue, so a stone's throw away from Nilon Park. Know the park very, very well, probably there every single day. A couple of things. The first thing is, I'm... The first thing is, I'm very supportive of what the Complete Streets Commission has put together. I think in terms of what the Parks and Recreation Commission, part of our goal plans are to have inclusivity, connect the various parts of Menlo Park, diversity, enjoy our open spaces, and these kind of help us attain those goals. The idea of being able to access Burgess Park through a possible underpass and a safe and friendly pedestrian bike lane would be great between Nealon Park and Burgess Park. And then also, just having safety be better. I absolutely agree, transversing across Middle Avenue, El Camino, and being able to walk to the various different parks just from Allied Arts over to the downtown area and to Burgess areas, kind of tricky and often difficult. And I found myself at times, as a pedestrian, feeling compromised by the vehicle traffic, and then also, as a driver, needing to be really alert. So, I think there are a couple of things to think about in terms of the plan is safety, and even just looking at how our crossings exist currently. I think some of the success with the lights at the Ravenswood Crossing could really help Middle Avenue and that crossing to Nealon Park. So, really excited to possibly look at and consider other safety measures there as well. But just here also, to lend support to a great bike plan, really applaud the work the Complete Streets Commission has done.
Thank you. Ms. Loaki?
Hi, thanks for giving us the opportunity to comment. My name's Laura Loaki. I'm a resident in Menlo Park on College Avenue as well. I have three young kids, and like Jennifer, I'm at Nealon Park almost daily. I just am very supportive of the types of proposals that are being made around improving Middle Avenue for pedestrians and for bicyclists. The couple of things I would just add, or particularly lend some support to, would be thinking about adding lights to that crosswalk. I've personally almost been hit twice, and I know many people who've almost been hit with their children several times. And I've also personally not hit someone at a crosswalk that had lights where it was actually very close. So, I just can tell you that it's at least worked for me, and I think it's something to test, at least. And then I just raise maybe some concern. I think when maybe more complete plans are in place, it'll be more obvious, but the idea of putting a two-way bike path, sort of skirting along Nealon Park to get back to Roble, is possibly of concern, because there are a lot of children that play in the grassy area of Nealon Park, and having, you know, bicyclists going quite quickly along the side there could be of concern, maybe not. And I know also that alley definitely, it needs improvement. I would be as supportive of lights and new pavement and all of that. But a lot of strollers are coming and going there, too. So, sending more bikes back and forth, you know, as long as there's a way to ensure that the people, pedestrians and strollers are safe, then I think that would be something to consider as well. So, and that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments on the item? So I think Councilmember Keith covered it quite well, but also wanted to express support for this. I used to ride my, before I injured my neck, ride Middle every day. And I saw, I could, I often saw those interactions there. There's more and more traffic there, and slated to be more and more traffic coming there. So I look forward to this coming to our council agenda in the new year.
Hey, Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yes. Mayor Otaki.
Hi, I just wanted to add, also comment if I may. Just from my experience, living for several years on Middle, and taking my kids to Nealon Park when they were young, as well as my kids biking to Openall along Middle in the early years. So, there's a couple of things I'd like, I certainly support the Complete Streets recommendation. I wanted to add a couple of ideas for consideration. Certainly echo the addition of a lighted sidewalk at Blake, or a lighted crossing, crosswalk at Blake. That's definitely necessary, because as the previous speaker had mentioned, it's often traffic gets up to some pretty fast speeds there, and drivers often don't see someone entering the crosswalk. That's, I think, pretty important. The other aspect is potentially adding a stop signs at, further down on Middle at the crossing at San Mateo. There's an existing crosswalk. Bikes often cross there at San Mateo, as well as pedestrians, because of the bike bridge to Stanford over the creek. And as a result, and because it's a long stretch, traffic tends to pick up speed on that stretch of Middle. So, it would be, I think, it would add quite a bit to safety to consider a stop sign at San Mateo and Middle. And then the third aspect is what was commented by Bill Kirsch, is this issue at the Safeway, at the shopping center right there, the entrance right near Pete's Coffee on Middle is very congested, particularly in the evening. So you have a lot of traffic actually coming from Palo Alto, northbound on El Camino, taking the left on Middle, and then going into Safeway. What I think is a underutilized opportunity is on the left turn on El Camino into the, into the Safeway parking lot along through the entrance right on El Camino. And by trying to encourage traffic coming northbound on El Camino that wants to go to Safeway, to use that other entrance rather than using the Middle, would be something that would reduce the amount of traffic going in and out of the Middle entrance and exit. So, and I think there may be ways of doing that, either even potentially some sort of a signaling coordination with the Middle and El Camino. But that could take a significant amount of traffic off of Middle by putting it onto a, the existing left turn lane that goes into the Safeway parking lot along El Camino. So, something to consider. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Otaki. And thank you, Commissioner Kirsch, for coming again and sharing with us this evening. Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you very much for the report. That was excellent. As long as we're talking about the safety of complete streets, which includes pedestrians, one of the things I've seen that's concerned me a lot on the other side of the park, over where the church is, is the children running back and forth, either because they've parked there, or sometimes they can use the restroom at the church, which is one of the reasons why we pushed to put in a restroom in that park, because we do have a lot of soccer games and a lot of people that come there that can use that. But we also need to make sure that we have safe markings for people to go back and forth from the other side of the park, crossing that street into that parking lot, or into that area, because I've saw, I was there when one child was hit by a car. Luckily, not badly, but bounced off a car. And we want to make sure that that doesn't happen again, and that that's also addressed when we address that area as a whole.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So now, we're going to go ahead and move to our regular business item this evening. Excuse me, we're going to move to our consent calendar this evening. Does anyone have any items I'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Can I make one comment on one?
Certainly.
On G4, on the back page, it talks about onsite sorting to correct incidence of waste contamination and to increase diversion rates. I've spoken to our city manager, Starla, about this. We need to make sure that this is enforced, and that they know it's going to be enforced, and that as we put this forward, we have teeth. And that because when things are incorrectly sorted, we will end up paying for that. Our ratepayers, our citizens, will end up paying for that as part of our agreement with recology. And I just want to make sure that we take that seriously, to make sure that that is managed appropriately.
Good. Thank you. We will.
Okay.
Mayor Otaki, do you have any items that you'd like to pull or comment on?
Nothing to pull. I certainly did want to just make a quick comment, thank you, on G7, that the, the project is a life sciences project, and because of the way that we zoned under the general plan, it has to be a life sciences project. And I think that is a good thing for the economic diversification of this city, to make sure that we are encouraging life sciences. And so, just, I do certainly support that. That's just a comment. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? We'll just do it by verbal, since Peter's on the phone. So, aye. Peter?
Aye.
Great, excellent. Consent calendar approved.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we're going to go ahead and move on to our regular business item, Adopt a Resolution Number 6474.
I want to ask Judy, just for the record, though, can you, it's unanimous with one not here.
I'll make sure the minutes reflect that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Adopt Resolution Number 6474, approving the City Council Community Funding Subcommittee's recommendations regarding the 2018-19 community funding allocation. We have Finance and Budget Manager Dan Jacobson here to answer questions. Do we have any public comment on the item? No. Okay, I actually have one question for the city attorney. I am on the Life Moves Board, and so I think I probably need to bifurcate the vote on this and not participate in the vote on Life Moves. Legally, you're not required to recuse yourself because it's a nonprofit, you have no financial interest in it. Fair enough, then I can go ahead and vote on it. Okay, being advised as such, then, do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Peter, did you have any comments on the phone?
No, but I'll be happy to make a motion to approve the Resolution 6474. And I also wanted to thank the Subcommittee for going through the grant applications as well as staff.
I will second it, and I would like to thank the staff. They are the ones that go through the painstaking process of going through and rating all these, and it's tough work. We appreciate that.
Okay, great. We can go ahead and vote. And Peter, do you just want to go ahead and verbally make your vote?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
The motion passes with Councilmember Klein absent.
Great. And so now, we've moved on to our informational items from the evenings. There's no staff presentation for informational items, but staff is available for questions if anyone has any. Do we have any comment cards on the informational items this evening?
Yes, we have a comment on I, or I4 and I6.
Great. Let's go ahead and take I4 first. Ms. Wallison? For the record, I4 is update on the citywide Safe Routes to School program.
Good evening, Council. I believe I'm the I4 and the I6. So on I4, on Safe Routes to School, I want to thank you again for prioritizing Safe Routes to School. I attended the stakeholder meeting that Nikki put together with Alta, and also one of the community events. And it was wonderful having everyone in the same place to talk about Safe Routes. One of the, kind of the elephant in the room, obviously, was infrastructure. And so, something that I would love to see, the Alta and the city are about to hire a part-time Safe Routes to School Coordinator, and I would really encourage Council to consider making that a full-time position, and really expanding the scope of what that job would be, to work with engineering as well, to help either with pop-up pilot projects, or to help advance infrastructure projects related to Safe Routes to School. So that would be my ask, having Safe Routes move forward. Secondly, on the Ravenswood Rail Project, I just would encourage staff and Council to reconsider the decision to only grade-separate one crossing and to help connectivity and safety in our town by having more grade separations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on I4?
Yes. I actually noticed that we are missing a school, an elementary school, from the private schools list, and I've informed staff, and they will add that to future documents.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Any other comments on I4? Moving on to I6, are there any other comments on I6? Councilmember Keith?
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. Can I have whoever's from staff wants to come up on this? Is it Justin? Hi. I know this is an informational item, but I think there's a lot of interest in this, and I want to have a couple of questions answered about it. And you probably saw we had some emails come in from Dana Hendrickson about the fully elevated grade separation, and can you just discuss that? Because we did talk about that in, I think it was May. And I'd like to make sure that there's a portion of that that's involved here.
Certainly. Thank you for asking the question. My name is Angela Obeso, Senior Transportation Engineer in the Public Works Department, and Justin Murphy, our Public Works Director, with me to help answer any questions. Specifically pertaining to those questions, I have seen all the emails that came in today regarding the project and this item. The purpose for it coming tonight as an informational item, as opposed to a regular business item, was exactly to get this kind of feedback. We have a draft put together. We've worked back and forth with the consultant on what we understood the ask was from the community and the council's direction, and we just want to make sure we get it right before we come back to you, asking for an action. So, the feedback that we've gotten from Mr. Hendrickson and others today, and all the way through to, we're hoping to get all the comments received by January 3rd from the community, so that we can incorporate it, be part of the staff report, any revisions. Then when we come back to you in January with an action item, we can have it right and get it moving forward as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks, Angela. And I appreciate your response, and that, I think highlighting January 3rd, 2019, is the key date to try and get, if there are any community responses to this, to get them to you by January 3rd, 2019. And I do know that we had asked, you know, we, as a council, wanted to see that, too, to have the study. And there's, I think that's important. And then, just talking about Ravenswood grade separation, I know, I think that night there were four of us here on that vote. And so, I recall, you know, I was supportive, actually, of doing three grade separations, but there wasn't, there was no consensus to move that forward. And so, we ended up with just one. And I think there are differences of opinions about, obviously, about how to do this, you know, one, two, three, or fully elevated, and the trenching. So we're still looking to get that information about the cost on that, and obviously, places like Palo Alto have taken a look at that and prepared reports, and they'll have a discussion, I think, this month on their grade separations as well. But just making sure that we don't lose sight of the fully elevated that we had requested to have information on is really important, so when that comes back. And when, you're saying you're collecting information until, or comments until January 3rd, and then when are you, when are you trying to bring that back to the council?
So that would be up to the interim city manager and the council members, when you put together the agendas for those nights. The reason that we set January 3rd as our request for getting feedback is so that we staff can have a staff report and any revisions back and forth with the consultant team as soon as possible. So once that first meeting is set, we will be ready. If that doesn't work out due to competing agenda items, we can come back at the second meeting in January. But our intention is to be ready as soon as we can, whenever that first meeting gets set for.
And then I think it would be important to bring back for the community, if you can, some sort of cost analysis between fully elevated versus, you know, the idea of the hybrid that we were looking at, so people understand that as well. Great. Thank you very much.
Mayor Otaki, do you have any comments on the phone?
I'll just, I'll make my comments brief. Definitely want to express my thanks to Angela and team for, you know, certainly moving this forward. this forward, and appreciate her just mentioning that she is taking into account the emails that we received from Mr. Hendrickson and others, and that that will be factored into a new scope of work draft, which will go in front of the new council in January. I certainly do want to encourage that. And I will simply say that, I mean, all along I've been, you know, certainly an advocate for doing just the Ravenswood undercrossing, and I certainly wanted to reiterate that my rationale behind that was certainly trying to make sure that we don't miss our opportunity as a city to get a grade separation funded by the county because of the funding constraints. Having said that, I certainly support making sure that we are looking at these other alternatives such as the fully elevated, or what used to be called the biaduct, and also, and also the trench. But I certainly do want to, you know, recommend that we continue on this course of making sure we're in a position to apply for Ravenswood, but make sure we have studied these other alternatives so that we know we're making the best decision for the city, or that the future council will be making the best decision for the city. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Otaki. I'm going to take public comment from Mr. Riggs, who I believe is filling out a comment card on.
Regarding the grade separations, I did want to encourage you, the council, and our staff to make sure that the additional work by the consultant serves the purpose. I had the trouble last night, too. The purpose being to have sufficient information before you that you can make a judicious decision. There are so many drawbacks to our Scheme A that, as I recall, the Planning Commission could not back it. Planning Commission expressed disappointment with the two schemes put forward. I recall that this council also expressed disappointment. I'm very glad that we have the two alternatives coming forward. I hope that the report that we envisioned from the consultant includes a comparison of impacts during construction. Besides the ultimate goal, which for downtown included connectivity east-west, there are also significant downsides with the currently chosen preferred alternative and the second choice, which will effectively shut down access to downtown for three to five years. I don't think this should be underestimated, and there should be sufficient information for discussion. I'd also like to ask, and this applies on more general terms, that given the progress indicated between May and this is December, where not only do you not have a report, but you don't have a contract to sign in order to get that report, that staff identifies someone to own such projects so that these projects can be kept moving, so that someone is responsible, not in terms so much of saying, why haven't you done your job, or why aren't you making progress, but the feeling that any manager has, this is my project, I want to move it forward. And I fear that this may be missing, particularly in this environment where we are very much challenged in getting staff at all. So those are my requests, and I appreciate the hearing being held, and I appreciate that staff brought forward this opportunity for you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Madam, did you have a, we are on I6 right now, did you have a comment that you wanted to make this evening? No? Yeah, I saw you grab a card in the back, I just wanted to see.
I didn't fill out a card, I just came in, and I was surprised that you were already on this item. I had been told it probably wouldn't be started till nine, 9:30 tonight, so. My name is Hindesak, I live in Menlo Oaks on Arlington Way, and I moved there in 2012, running away from the Caltrain right-of-way, down on Park Boulevard in South Palo Alto, where I, the front of my house faced other houses that backed up onto the right-of-way. And I had spent four years going to meetings and council meetings in Palo Alto, and I just couldn't do it anymore. I couldn't see spending the rest of my life on the high-speed rail and Caltrain. In any case, I forwarded to members of the council today two documents presented by CARRD, the calorie, okay, to Palo Alto in the last month or so. And I think there's a lot of wealth of information in that, technical stuff that they have been following for years. And I would like to refer you to that again. I have been in touch with Nadia Nayak, who's a member of CARD. And I would really request that the city council try to make contact with them. They have a lot to say, and they have been, they have kept things in line in many ways in the old days, and are still there, which is, I'm very grateful for, so that's.
Thank you. Any more public comment cards this evening? No, okay. Councilmember Carlton.
I wanted to comment on I3, if it was okay for us to move to that item?
So I'd like to actually, before we come off I6, I have a comment to make myself.
Okay, go ahead.
So with respect to I6, I just wanted to note for the record, the same position I took last time, so staff's aware of it. I don't think partial grade separation's safe, and so I really, when it comes back to us, I'm more than likely going to raise the issue again. I also have not given up on tunneling. I recently came to my attention and was forwarded from a Palo Alto stakeholder that Los Angeles is actually tunneling for high-speed rail. They did the cost assessment, and in Los Angeles, they see the long-term implications. And so they are actually going to build a tunnel for it, and it seems to me that if land value is that way in Los Angeles, it's that way here as well. So there are stakeholders in Palo Alto and Mountain View both serious about talking about that issue with us. So just wanted to note that for the record, as more comments given this evening. And then also just to note, so the public's aware, who's the manager for this project right now?
I am the project manager for this project.
Thank you for your work on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've been on record liking tunnels, so I'll continue to support that idea.
So we're going to, no problem. We can go ahead, then, Councilmember Carlton, move to I3.
So I3 is really interesting, this comes back up again. It's one of those bills that I saw, I think, six or seven years ago come through Sacramento, and when I did, I heard a doctor who specializes in cancer speak and talk about how it's a real issue, hence the jury finding, that in multi-unit housing, smoke can get in and impact people living next door. And I heard a woman speak who had been on the waiting list for BMR housing. She finally got into the housing and had a baby who was being impacted by someone who smoked, I don't know how many packs a day, but nonetheless. I appreciate the Housing Commission's concern about displacement, but I also pretty viscerally remember the tears and frustration of a mother with a young baby who felt trapped in a situation where she couldn't keep her baby safe from smoke. And it makes me even that much more concerned as we now have marijuana smoking legalized, that there might be places where you have newborn babies to children, and the parents are helpless to keep their children away from the carcinogens or the marijuana or whatever is being smoked. So while I understand some of the positions in this, I still feel like it's something that we might consider in the future, because it's not fair to force people to be exposed to things, particularly when they have children. I just wanted to throw it out there for us to, something to consider in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. For the record, Ms. Aaron, I want to note that the city attorney removed himself from city chambers during the discussion of I6. And with that, are there any more comments, questions regarding the information items? Okay, then we're going to move on to city manager's report. Any report this evening?
I do not.
Any councilmember reports?
I attended the League of Cities Leadership event that they had in Orange County, and we all got together and created the topic areas that they're going to focus on in the coming year. Councilmember Keith was also there. I was there as, I'm president of the LGBT Caucus for the coming year, so I was there representing the caucus.
Yes, I went to that meeting as well. It was for strategic goal-setting, and they chose, we chose four: increased housing production and affordability, improved disaster preparedness and climate resiliency, promote pension sustainability, and address public safety concerns. So those are the four subtopics that the League will be really focusing in on this year for 2019.
Okay, any other councilmember reports? Okay, we are adjourned.